I can't.
It's up there.
Oh, she's in. Oh, good. Okay. Okay. Oh, good. She's working on giving me the. Yeah. She's even like, I just want to be money. Yeah, no, she's.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, we have just a timer. Thank you for doing so responsibly. Okay, awesome. Thanks for being so responsive.
I was telling. Yeah, they were. We had the Christmas. The refrigerator. My grand boy. He was. Grandson. We enjoyed it. Yeah, I made the reservations today. Patrick's graphic. When he. He, yeah, he ran with. Mother's name would get Steve down. Will be the first grandson to graduate.
All right, let's get this meeting underway. Thank you all for being with us. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda? All right, and are there any items that people would like to add to the agenda? Okay, great. Just FYI, I think we should be done by four, but if not, I'm going to have to step out at four so our vice chair can help facilitate if we're not done by then. First item up is the revaluation presentation from Keith Miller. Keith, thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioner. Have a.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Which of the seven of us asked you to come forward?
Um, no commissioner asked me to be here.
Okay. You work for us. That's who you work for. You have a contract. Who asked you to come forward?
Uh, the county manager's office.
Okay. We should, you work for us.
I'm sorry?
You work for us.
Yes, I would agree with that.
You got a four-year contract. No different than she does. No different than he does. Got a contract. No different than our county attorney has. You and the other part has. So when you need to come forward, it'd be nice you contact one of us. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
You know, I'm just, I don't disagree that Mr. Miller ultimately reports to the commission, but I think it's also important to recognize that our staff work together in a collaborative way. It's of course entirely appropriate for the.
Okay. Our county. We'll go through this.
Finish, please.
We'll go through this.
Let me finish. So I would just say that speaking as one commissioner, we're all welcome to have our opinions about different issues. But my view that kind of coordination is an essential part of smooth running the government. So this is my two cents.
Well, that's your two cents. My two cents, this gentleman has invited us for three-on-threes down to his office. That's where he works at, his office. Not up here, not before, just a few people. We've got a roomful of staff. I can't talk, but we got a roomful of staff. That's all we got. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars sitting in this room.
Right, you know.
Right and down, wait a minute.
Go ahead.
You're cutting me off.
Go ahead.
I looked at it the way I look at it. We have a way that's a plan. And we're not going by the plan. Yes, we work together. Our county attorney works. Everybody tries to work. But we don't tell people from a different area. I don't tell the staff that don't work for me that they need to do something. Period. So I want an understanding that the two people at the tax department. Now, we've got some problems there. Not in his area, but in others. That they work for the commissioners and they have a four-year contract. He's invited us to do a three-on-three on an email. Be more than happy to. And I'm going to if anybody else wants to go, but I'll do a one-on-one. But him coming up here to hand us this because our staff thinks they need to. What our, our county manager's hard to do one thing. It's not run everybody in the county. Because the ones that's under us, that's ours. They can talk, but it's not the point to bring them forward in something like this.
Well, I would, I would just, you know, I would share, I think having small closed-door meetings is fine. I think there's also a lot of value in discussing these issues in open public format. So I personally appreciate the fact that we're doing that now. Any other commissioners wish to share observations? All right, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here.
Okay, sure, thank you. So as most of you remember, February of last year, I came before you and asked you to advance the reappraisal from 2025 to 2021. So that's will become effective January 1 of 2021. So we are starting that process. So I have a few things here I'll share with you as we get started on the process. If I can get to the next one. Okay, here we go. So the agenda for me today, some things that I want to cover with you is background, reappraisal basics, market indicators, residential market value versus assessed value, data collection, public outreach, appeal process, and then reappraisal schedule. So background, in February 2019, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution to conduct a reappraisal in 2021. Why did Buckingham County decide to advance the reappraisal to 2021? First of all, the projected sales ratio would drop below 85%, which would trigger the North Carolina General Statute's mandatory reappraisal. Our office monitors that quarterly. We report to the North Carolina Department of Revenue quarterly. So we have a pretty good idea of where we're at on those percentages all the time. The second one is inequity in assessments due to appreciating market and maintain the public service revenue. So reappraisal basics. The reappraisal isn't appraisal. It is an opinion value of every parcel in Buckingham County. Buckingham County has roughly 127,000 parcels and each parcel in the county will have a new market value assigned to it. Required by state law at least over eight years unless the option of four-year schedule is adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Buckingham County residents may see a change in their tax bill August of 2021, and the FYI 22 budget may also be impacted. An reappraisal is not an increase based on the sale versus assessment study, which we, as I said, do quarterly, but a process of appraising all parcels of market value. A reappraisal should be standalone, should be independent of any prior values. And prior value versus reappraised value, creating a percent change is irrelevant. The reappraisal creates a new value from scratch based on market value. Tax assessment versus market value, whether they're equal and whether they're not. Reappraisal or assessed value is an estimate of value one moment in time. This question comes up often because the reappraisal value, as this says, is effective January 1 of 2021. So if you get into 2022, 2023, and you get asked the question, well, why are those two values now not equal? It's because you're still looking at an appraised value for January 1 of 2021. So the market does change after that. Reappraisals are market-driven. The assessor's task is to interpret the market, understand the story, the statistics provided, forecast the future, and make a reappraisal recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Market indicators, things that we watch. Here's a little bit of a idea for you of where we've came from and where we're at. Reappraisals are a response to market changes. As you can see, this graph goes back to 2009. And we were showing a median sales price of about 200,000. And now we get into 2020 and you've got a median sales price of probably getting up close to 300,000. So the reappraisal has to respond to this. If not, then your sales assessment ratio really drops very low and you will be triggered statute, which the Department of Revenue will put you on notice that you have.
Would you just, just for the record, would you define median for people that are listening?
Well, median sales price would be the middle of the data set. So it's not an average. Okay, that would be the mean. So the median is that if we have 100 sales in the, in the data set, wherever we're at in the middle would be the median. So it doesn't, the outliers do not skew that number as it would in. Does that answer your question, Mr. Bell?
Mr. Bell? No. The question was for everybody in the room. A lot of times we use terms when we're, you know, presenting these that, you know, mean a lot to some people, but may not mean a lot to the public. So I just think it's good if we define those.
Absolutely. And if you see another one, please stop. It's easy to use these words every day in our business, but not stop always and understand that maybe not everyone knows what I mean. So a little more statistics for you. 2014 to 2018, again, the median sales price change for Buckingham County was 36.3%. So that was the appreciation from 14 to 18. And I show you this because, again, it shows you why that we need to do reappraisals in order to stay equitable in the market, keep our parcels at 100% of market value. Statistics we use in the sales assessment ratio. Commissioner Bell, this one, this is the one that you're talking about. This is something that we monitor and it's called the coefficient of dispersion. So if you see the two bullseyes and you see where it says low COD and then you have one that says high COD, what happens in a reappraisal as time passes is the coefficient of dispersion increases because the inequity in the parcels increases. Market changes at a different rate in different neighborhoods across the county. Therefore, it puts the level of assessment not equitable between all those parcels. So that's what happens is when you see the blue dots, those would represent parcels in the, in the market. And after a reappraisal, how they top them back up and come back into the center circle. The ratio study from 2002 to current. If you see the spikes in the graph, those will be the reappraisal years of 2002, 2006, 13, 2017. So you see the cycle as we go through time. As you get down to the bottom, that's where the sales rest, the sales assessment ratio starts getting into the 80s. We do the reappraisal and then we come back up to the peak. So it's a continuous cycle as long as the market's doing what it's doing. This is the reaction to the market. Residential market versus assessment value. Here's some examples for you. This home sold in September 2019 for 320,000. The assessment on it was 205,000. That ratio is 64%. So it's telling you that the assessment is 64% of the sales price. I give you a little example there, too. If the county taxes at 100%, it would be $1,693. At 64%, you're at $1,084, where a difference of $609 based on 2019 tax rate. The next example for you, October 2019, this home sold.
Can I ask a question on that sale? Your backside. So. Do we, I'm sure we know the, if that was purchased by a family in Buckingham County or if that was purchased by an investor?
I could probably look at the record and tell you that. I don't have that data in front of me.
Right, sure.
But I could probably.
And I'm not asking for that.
Yeah, I could look at the record and probably tell you.
Make it.
Give you an idea.
As we go forward.
Yes. Next one, 375,000 was the sales price assessed at 276. That's 74%. The assessed value is of the sales price. The next one, September 2019, 325,000, assessed at 295,000. That's 91% of the sales price, where a difference of $609 in the tax revenue. So here's, here's, on this slide right here, we'll really give you a good idea of why reappraisals are important. The first one I gave you is 64%. Then you have a 74% and a 91%. So what this is showing you is the inequity and the uniformity in the market or in the assessments start becoming skewed over time. So the first person is only paying taxes on 64% of their actual market value, whereas the third person's paying 91% of their actual market values. This is what the reappraisal is all about, is to fix these inequities in the market and to make sure that every, every person is paying their fair share and has a uniform assessment across the county. So let's talk about data collection a little bit. I'm going to do. So different methods that we use, desktop review, a full measure list, walkarounds, and street views. So I like to say that Buckingham uses a hybrid of these because we do them all. We don't just say that we're going to do all desktop reviews or we don't do all the walkarounds. We make decisions on which ones those would be adequate for the property that we're looking at. So the state also has reappraisal standards that they ask for us to meet. So that's a little bit about what this slide is about. Also, if you see in the state threshold column over on your right, for the desktop review, there's a minimum top review required by the state. A full measure relist is when the accuracy of the square footage is below 95%. And the same for the walk-around and the street view. Once the accuracy's dropped below 95% and then 90%, then the state's going to give you a recommendation on what kind of reappraisal that you should do. So this also affects cost. So the less accurate the data, if you have to do a full measure and relist of every home in Buckingham County, then the expense of that becomes quite large. This is data, this is Buckingham County's measure in the data. We did this last year. We sampled a little over 1,000 parcels based on what the state asked us to do. Our square footage data came in at 98.79% accurate. Objective data was 96.88. Subjective data was 98.36. So it keeps us above 95% in all those categories, which, which allows us to do street view if that's the only thing that we wanted to do. But in many cases, that's not all we want to do. We go to the next level when we feel that we need to. So residential parcel review. Total, this is adjusted 2019. The appraisers reviewed 22,656 parcels in the county. Desktop review was 14,861 and the field review was 7,795. Total residential parcels, 115,317. Total improved, 92,300. So out of the total improved 92,300 in 2019, in some way, we touched through this hybrid method that we have 22,000 of those to looking for updated data and checking accuracy on those parcels. Commercial, same in 2019. The desktop reviews were 1,256, field reviews 4,081. Total parcels, 7,700 and 6,300 in improved parcels. Technology, technology has improved how we do things today. I started in this business 24 years ago when I was looking at cadastro maps and we were trying to identify houses based on evergreen trees in the yard. Okay? That's, you know, I've been here a while. We've come a long way in the assessment business and that's how we do a better and better job. And that's how we can keep our, their data accuracy at the best it can be. We review every sale. That's a part of the multiple listing service. So in the prior years before we had access to multiple listing service, 99% of the homes in this county, we would never see in the interior of. We had no idea what was in your home unless you invited us to come in your home. Now we have pictures provided by the multiple listing service that we can get an idea of the quality of the home, the condition of the home, if it did sell through the multiple listing service. So this is a great tool for appraisers. It's a great tool to check our data, square footage, bedrooms, bathrooms, and so on.
There's no kids' toys all over the floor in those pictures up there?
No, not in this house. There's no children. This is just, this is just a couple who's an empty nest.
Sure.
Okay. So the next tool we use is the pictometry and our aerial imagery. The 2020 capture of that is being flown as we speak. So we have made some changes in the quality of that for this reappraisal. This new product is called Reveal 250. It is a sub-two inch imagery, which means the pixels are 1.85. This, if you look at the picture in the left-hand side, the four-inch pixels, that's the, that's photography that we used to have in their prior flyovers. You see the quality of it is not really good enough to help us make decisions with. However, the new flyover with the Reveal 250, we can do roof inspections, we can do siding inspections. We can actually see damage on the site, anywhere on these houses. We can actually see, you know, the dog standing in the door if he was there, so.
Needs to be classified.
Again, this was shot from an airplane. Okay? This is the quality of the photography that we will have and that we review. You see the dog in the pool and, you know, we're kind of pointing out some things to you that we can't see. So if we were never invited in this house, there's a good possibility we wouldn't even know.
There was a dog.
We wouldn't even know they had a pool or a dog. So now we know that, don't go in the fence because you might get dog bit. So, but some of the things, though, that I want you to see is that, you see the roof tiles on this house? That we could do an inspection of those, we can do an inspection of the pool in the patio. We can make determinations on how many bathrooms may be in this house, how many fireplaces may be in this house. There's a few things that we can tell from the roof that we just have to, we can make decisions on. We don't have any other better doubt. This photo will show you that I can see the crack in the wall on this house. So if, now this picture's not the best, the quality, but because it's been copied. But the point here is that if this person appealed their property value, then I could sit with them at my desk. They could show me the cracks in these walls, they could show me the condition of the building in the rear, and we could sit and have a conversation about that and not have to send one of our appraisers out on the road to be able to verify that. Change Finder is another tool that we use. Change Finder, we flew in 2017. And what Change Finder is, is from our aerial photography. The picture on the left is the old picture. It was from a prior flyover. So you see the footprint of that house. If you look at the picture on the right, you will see that house has had an addition added to it. So Change Finder will identify the changes in the footprints of these homes. So we are then put on notice that someone needs to go there and take a look at this to make sure that we're not missing something. Some of you may have saw the Ghostbuster car ride around town. So it is out there going through neighborhoods. This is Cyclone Media. And these are street-level photography, 360-degree perspective of the properties in the neighborhood, street-level building inspections, measurements of high-level accuracy from the street. Hot, flint, width, and area increases our efficiencies, works appeals faster, more accurately, and actually decreases appeals. So this is a great tool, a tool that we've never had before that we could see also, not only horizontally from the street, but we can see vertically. So if you're sitting in downtown beside the Aris Building and you want to, you want to sit there and look at your computer and see the top of the building, then you can, you can hand up and see, count how many floors are in that building. This is a street-level kind of shot of what that panoramic street imagery looks like. So who can use this?
How much does that little vehicle cost us to do that?
I don't want to quote a number off my head, Commissioner Farrar, but I'm going, if you would like, I can give you my best memory or I can wait and send you the exact number from the contract. But it was right at 250,000 to do accounting, right? But you find that, that sound, maybe sounds like a lot of money, but as you keep our vehicles off the road, we are reducing fleet, we are reducing fuel costs, we are reducing staff time on the road. So, you know, in the end, it becomes a more efficient way of, of doing business. And not only for tax, there's other people that can use this product, which we will share within the county. Emergency services, sheriff, fire, planning, addressing. Good little example for you is that addressing can check the house. They can see the street number on the house. They can see the street sign and be able to verify the name and the number if they want. So this will be shared, Commissioner Farrar, not only for tax, that expense, but this will be shared with other departments to also be put into use in their processes. Public outreach concerning the reappraisal. 2019, we began the collaboration with our own community engagement here in the county and our PR team to start putting together a plan on reaching the citizens about reappraisal, educating the citizens about what this is about and about what we're doing. So January through December of 2020, we will be scheduling speakers of different places that requested, civic groups, local groups in town. We will publish the reappraisal guide, which some of you may have saw from 2017. There's a little picture of it that we did in 2017. We're working on that now and hope to have that out to the citizens sometime in February. Video on TV, social media, flyers inserted in the tax billings, and educate the community and department heads and staff on what reappraisal is in order to help their citizens and their, their own neighbors. So citizens' concerns. So we know that many citizens have concerns and we approach on how that we overcome those and how we help the citizens better understand. The biggest one is the fear of unknown. When citizens hear they're going to be reappraised, the first thing they think is that their taxes are going to go up and it's that fear of the unknown, that we don't know how much or we don't know what our bill's going to be. But what I always stress, reappraisal is a good thing. It creates equity in the communities. The taxes has nothing to do with what I do every day. The tax rate is set here by this Board of Commissioners based on the values that I have. So how much will a tax bill increase? Misunderstanding of reappraisals and why it's important. Educate and communicate about reappraisals. Reappraisal is a method to increase revenue. That's what we hear a lot, but that is not true. Revenue neutral is a function of reappraisal. That is not true. Reappraisal is conducted based on desired budget. Not true. Our assessed value and market value are always the same. So these are just a few things that we, we have said, this is what citizens say to us and this is kind of what we hear. This is their concerns, this is some of their fears. And these are some of the things that we will try and work with the public to try and overcome, to help them better understand why we do what we do. The other outreach is that you will soon see a new face on the tax website. We have implemented a new application which makes it easier for our citizens. Only thing they have to do now is come to this page, either type in their name or just type in their street address and it will pull back immediately the houses that they can see. What they will get back is a photo of their house. They will get a map that shows their property lines. And from this screen here, they will be able to file an appeal. They'll be able to get comparables for their property if they want to file an appeal. So it should be a better, should be, it will be a better experience for our citizens. It will make it easier for them to be able to know what's going on. They will be able to do a comparable sales grid. As you see here, you have the subject. The application will automatically pick the three comparables that's most comparable to your home and it will pull back that for you and show you what an estimated value should be. Many people, many citizens have no idea what the value of their home should be. So this helps them better see the market and better understand why they got the value from, from the tax department that they did. Appeals. The appeal process is the. The appeal process is the, first is the informal appeal. The statute gives a citizen the ability to appeal to the assessor first, to ask for consideration of a change or a correction. If that's not satisfactory, then they can go to the formal appeal, which is the Board of Equilization and Review, which is appointed by you. The next step will be the Norcan Property Tax submission and Norcan Court of Appeals. So there is remedies for anyone who has questions about anything, any value that we send them. And I always tell citizens that, if you're concerned about anything that you think that you didn't consider, then please, you need to appeal the value and tell us what it is that we need to know. The appeal process, informal appeal process will begin online at buncombecounty.org. The following documents can be used to support the appeal. Sales comparison of properties that are sold before January 2020, an appraisal report completed within two years, sales contract or closing statement, list of similar properties that were offered for sale, photos showing the condition of the property and other factors, and other information that may assist in establishing value. Any of these items that the citizen can provide to us that occurred before January 1 of 2020, we will happily accept and review. So let's get, January through December of 2020, we will establish the new assessments. February, we will publish the reappraisal guide and start the public outreach campaign. April through May, scheduled values adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Then going into 2021, January through February, we will mail the new assessments to the citizens. February through April will be the informal appeals. March through April, we will estimate taxable value for revenue estimates for all the districts, and that's when we start working with budget. April, Board of Equilization Review convenes for appeals. June, establish the new tax rate. Board of Commissioners will establish the new tax rate. And August, tax bills mailed to the citizens. That's a lot. So any questions, something you'd like to need to go back to, something a little more detailed? And I will say that Commissioner Farrar is correct, I invite any of you that want to come and talk to me about more detail, please come and let's sit down and talk through it. I want you to be, have the knowledge and be able to talk to the citizens in your area about the things that's going on. So I'm welcome to, I welcome you to come anytime you want to come and sit down and talk to me as a group or one-on-one either.
Thank you so much for this presentation, and I really appreciate you being here to get us oriented to the process, but also so we can kind of kick off the public conversation about this. When the reappraisal was happening last time, I got so many questions, and it was always one of the top three issues that people brought up. And I thought your office did a fantastic job coordinating community engagement and communication and walking people through the appeals process. So I definitely see opportunities like this as one more way to kind of open up a channel of communication and appreciate the clarity and comprehensiveness of how you're kind of telling the story of what's on the horizon. Thank you.
Sure.
Keith, thanks. It was a good presentation, and it really reminds me of how far we've come with technology and how cheaper things have gotten, and we can do a much better job than when I started in banking in the 70s.
Right.
So keep up the good work, but this has been very informative. Good, thanks.
Thank you, sir. One else? All right, Keith. Thank you so much. Okay, next up, Jeremiah Roy is going to talk to us about interlocal agreement, energy campaign coordination. Mr. Roy, good to see you.
Who you marked down.
Okay, thanks.
There we go. Okay. We are here to talk about a potential interlocal agreement with the City of Asheville for community energy campaign. Essentially, it's also really an update of the work of the Energy Innovation Task Force.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic?
Sure, sorry. It's also really an update about the work of the Energy Innovation Task Force. So just a little bit of a background, the Energy Innovation Task Force Commission passed a resolution to create this entity back in 2016. It's a collaborative between the city and the county and Duke Energy. And this collaborative had two initial goals. Number one was to avoid the construction of a natural gas peaking unit, and the other was to transition our community to a cleaner, smarter, and more affordable energy future. So I'm actually really, one of the great reasons I'm here today is to say, mission accomplished to a certain degree. It's nice to be here with, with good news because that peaking unit is no longer on Duke's long-term plans. So with a lot of hard work between these organizations and various community members, we're happy to say that we're ready to move forward. So really, this is about determining what the future of the Energy Innovation Task Force looks like. So the EITF obviously is seeking to continue its work and to refocus its efforts in a new direction. So first, one of these things is to change the name. Energy Innovation Task Force is a EITF, bit of a mouthful. And one of the things that happened throughout this process was the sort of rebranding of these efforts under the Blue Horizons Project. And so it only made sense to sort of keep that, that continuity and call this the Blue Horizons Project Community Council. So really, it's just, just changing the name and to really focus its new energies on advancing the community-wide renewable energy goals of the city and the county. So as you know, both the city and the county have some pretty aggressive 100% renewable goals. And so that really is intended to be the new purpose of this, this reformation of this entity. So it's also to move this to a nonprofit model, which essentially is to house this organization within a local nonprofit. I'll get to a little bit more about the specifics of that. After some discussion internally, the recommendation was that we should basically go through the process that we did initially, which is to adopt a new resolution to formally establish this community council.
So I've got a question.
Absolutely.
Back up.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So who made the decision to change to the Blue Horizons?
This has all been a part of a discussion within the Energy Innovation Task Force itself.
So the committee, the?
Correct, correct.
So did we establish, did we establish the EITF?
We did. The city and the county both adopted an identical resolution, creating this kind of joint public board.
So in order for this to be reestablished, I think, you know, when you talk through this, be more specific.
Sure.
And when we discussed or, you know, make sure that the public understands who, who we are.
Sure.
And, and, you know, for that fact that, that we understand.
Sure.
So.
Absolutely, so.
So back, back up.
Yeah.
Stay on the, let me finish this and we'll go on, okay? So then there'll be, there'll be a resolution coming back with explanation on establishing this, and the reason it appears that that's wanting to be done is to, is to create it as a nonprofit?
Well, it's to, it's to, number one, change the focus, to change the purpose, because the original purpose really was.
You don't have to change the name, it would change the focus.
Correct. The, the changing of the name was simply for the continuity of all of it being under one umbrella, one name, as opposed to an Energy Innovation Task Force and a Blue Horizons Project being two separate entities.
So you had Blue Horizons.
Correct.
Project, okay, that was going on at the same time, right?
That is the branding.
Can you explain what Blue Horizons Project is?
Absolutely. So the Energy Innovation Task Force basically did a marketing campaign to understand how our community would like this to be branded. So Duke actually paid for a consultant to come in and do some, some outreach to the community and determine what would be the best way to brand this, these efforts. And so that was what came out of that collective sort of, you know, research was that the Blue Horizons Project was sort of the name chosen by the community. And so that's the, the way that the work has been branded. So it's the Energy Innovation Task Force being the task force created by the boards, and then the work being done under the branded name of Blue Horizons Project.
Okay. One more question. This deal was put together by Duke Energy, the first deal, not to Duke Horizon. So Duke's out of it now?
No, no, sir. This would continue a collaboration between the city, the county, and the utility.
Yeah. Duke brought it forward. We didn't bring it forward, the city didn't bring it forward. The Dukes, Mr. Wallace's people were the ones that brought this forward, thought it would be a good idea. I never thought it'd be a good idea and still don't. So, but changing the name, what's the big deal? Started out one name, the other name tied to it, it's no big deal. You answer, you answer my question.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have a quick question. Has it been determined which local nonprofit will house this?
That's actually the, the point of this presentation, is to let you know that there's an RFP and a joint interlocal agreement that needs to happen before that RFP can be issued. So yes, I will get to that in just a moment. Okay. So as we were talking about, the nonprofit model we're referring to is simply that this, this entity would be housed in a local nonprofit. That nonprofit would be responsible for selecting and recruiting the initial members of the council, implementing the deliverables of the Blue Horizons Project, which will include things like scaling up our weatherization and home repair for low-income households, community engagement, deployment of renewables throughout the community, and increasing participation in energy efficiency and demand-side management programs, as well as, of course, the administrative side of it, which is facilitating and coordinating media and marketing campaigns. And one of the things that I think was attractive to the group in general about this nonprofit model was it also allows that nonprofit to do some additional fundraising that we aren't able to do as, as local governments. So there was some benefits there, and, and that's, I think, why the group really decided that that was the best model. So the intent is for the city and county to issue a RFP jointly in order to select the organization in which these responsibilities will be housed. An interlocal agreement obviously is required in order for us to issue an RFP jointly, and both the new resolution and as well as the interlocal agreement will be presented to the board at the January 21 meeting. I know we've gotten some questions already, but happy to answer any more than yet.
So, so this started out as a collaboration between Duke, City of Asheville, and Buncombe County.
Correct.
Which I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with that at all. So you're going out for RFP to spend X?
At this point, we're not committing any dollars to it. At this point, it's simply to.
RFP.
At this point, it's simply to get that, that information back, allowing opportunities for local organizations to present proposals to us for what they, they might want to charge for those services.
So it's.
And we can make some budget decisions based on that.
So I mean, you know, we don't have to, you know, dance around what it is.
True.
Paying RFP is a request for a proposal.
Correct.
It, it involves money, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm saying that we shouldn't invest that. But we, we started out, we just need to be very, very clear on what's going on. We started out with a, with a, with a collaboration between Duke and the city and the county because we were alarmed that the peaker plant was going to be built.
Yes, sir.
And that's pretty much my, my memory of it. So that started out.
Agreed.
And so the community comes together and Duke Power works with them, and people are, you know, appointed to that by resolution at the county level, right?
Correct.
Costs associated with that, because what we're doing is advocating for certain positions, is how much?
So currently, we've invested $25,000 annually. That's been our allotted sort of amount of dollars that go towards the Blue Horizons Project. The city and the county have both been allotting $25,000 each year. That has funded an individual position within Blue Horizons Project that's a coordinator, and that coordinator has been in charge of sort of managing the programs.
So we're paying $25,000 for that?
Currently.
Currently. Okay. So I guess we'll just wait to see how much it's going to cost.
That's, that's the idea, yes, sir. We'll, we'll understand more about what, what's needed to move that project forward once we receive responses.
I just think we want to be careful when we establish, we want to be careful that we establish something for collaboration, for, for advocacy, that these things just don't all of a sudden morph into, you know, a department within the county, you know, and I just think we need to be very, very careful as we look at it. There's some, we talked about energy efficiency in the, in the housing mandate. I mean, that's, you know, I was talking about, you know, how in the next, next couple of years and maybe even, even now, you know, that, I don't want to throw out, a, a big number of people that are living in Buncombe County will have heat pumps and air conditioners that they're not going to be able to get worked on. You know, the freon and everything in them is lesser outdated, and they need to be improved, and how much of an improvement on people's lives that could be, you know, to pay less on their, you know, their power bill and be more efficiency and quality. I just want to be very careful that we're not creating and growing and morphing into this, this big organization that typically is not, not a good idea. So, and you can take that as a challenge.
Absolutely.
That's what it's meant, that's what it's meant to be.
Understood.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Any additional questions?
I have also a question, I just, just want to kind of re-comment on this. The, I do think this has been a good, this has been a good partnership. You know, the peaker plant was going to cost all of us, right, there's over, over $100 million, right? For a plant that was only going to run a few days a year, and probably only for a few hours on a few days a year. So we were going to build this, you know, $100 million plant just to meet the needs on like these, you know, extremely cold this mornings when, you know, Duke has a job to make sure that we have reliable electricity all the time. So it's great for a bunch of different reasons that we figured out some strategies, some much less expensive strategies to make sure we'll have that electric reliability without building this, this peaker plant. So we do kind of have a chance to kind of have a community, you know, little victory dance on that. But I think there is a lot of interest in keeping this going, even though there's not that specific kind of, you know, project out there hanging, hanging over us like we had. I think the other thing that, through this collaboration, and this definitely had an impact, I think, on the, the peaker plant, a decision for Duke to take that out of their plans, is this whole increased focus on weatherization. And, and, and one of the neatest models that's kind of emerged, because there's a lot of different groups that do that kind of work, but one of the really neat ones, which I think the county can, can rightly, you know, take some, some modest credit for, is the whole Energy Savers Network where, you know, it's kind of like the Habitat for Humanity model, where you've got volunteers going out and, and working to help make people's homes safer and better insulated. And, you know, and they said this year, Energy Savers Network helped weatherize 200 homes in Buncombe County using mostly volunteers and just kind of a really modest level of some professional staffs at work. So I think what they've accomplished with very modest resources is great. And I think that's one of the areas where the folks who've been involved in this feel like there's, there's some really good opportunities to grow that successful, that successful model. But of course, all that will come back to the commission for further discussion when we, when we look at it. But those are a few of the highlights from, from what I've seen. The other thing about, about this, this kind of the next phase is that there's been a lot of people who've been very dedicated, spent a lot of time serving on the EITF. I think some of those folks kind of want to rotate off, you know, do, do other stuff. This is probably also great, some of them I think want to stay involved, and it'll also be a chance to, for other folks in the community who want to get involved to kind of create some space for that too. So those are some of the things I think everyone's kind of hoping will come out of this, kind of, kind of, you know, starting the, the next chapter of this. Any other questions? All right, Jeremiah, thank you so much. Okay, next up, committee appointment process for district managers. Going to lead us off in this one.
Thank you. You have been supplied with the document that lists the individuals that applied to be a part of the committee. And this is an opportunity to choose the applicants to move forward within the process, the selection process. I think some information as far as the timeframe that we're looking at, we would like to have this committee formed and appointed by February 15th, I think, so they can get the work started. And we also have Rachel Nygaard in the audience if you have any questions with the process or questions about the, the actual committee. But you have been given a list. I think it would not be a bad idea if you probably did it like we did for the Greenway Committee, if you want to continue with that process, but it is up to you.
What's the number that is going to be on the committee?
I, I think there were nine individuals.
What we did last time there, down by?
We kind of, we kind of went around and kind of got a nominee, kind of your first choice, second choice. That has a pretty good pool of candidates to interview, so we could do something similar here where everyone kind of thinks about, you know, list your, any first, second, third choices, and we'll see how many we get after doing first and second. We need a few more, we can go to. and we'll see how many we get after doing first and second. We need a few more. We can go to kind of the third, the third list. But unless we want to just interview every single person, then we do need some additional process to, to narrow it down a little bit. So I thought the, we haven't finished it yet, but I thought the initial process for the Greenway Committee was pretty good. So people like to do something similar-
From what you've spelled, all you do is-
I think unless we're just going to interview 100%, then that's probably, so, so why don't we have everybody kind of, kind of look at the list, reflect on this and come up with the, the two people you definitely want to consider and then maybe a third person that you would also be interested in if we need to keep, if we need to grow the pool out a little bit further. Does that sound good?
And, and they are listed by numbers. If you want to do the number system, you can call out their names, but it's up to you if you want to keep it where it's just the numbers at this point.
These appointments need to be made by February 15th.
I would defer to Rachel.
Yes, sir.
That would, that would be our recommendation for sure. We would like for the committee to be seated and start evaluating the applications.
Seated.
Appointed.
I believe we need to then, well, let's see. We're not going to be prepared to do this tonight, though.
Nope.
Right, so I guess we're looking at a next meeting. So our next meeting was put on the agenda, bringing your first, second, possibly third, and we'll, we'll make the decisions about who to interview. Is that, tell us what we need to do?
Sure. Just want to make sure everybody received the email with this information as well that was sent out before the break.
Like that and probably a hundred others.
Okay. All right, thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Matt Cable is going to talk about a resolution regarding French Broad River-
Good afternoon. I'm here before you this afternoon just to provide you a preview of an item that will be coming before you at your January 21st meeting. The request is from the French Broad River NPO. The NPO is requesting a resolution from the Board of Commissioners in support of a regional transit feasibility study that the NPO will be conducting over the current fiscal year and into next fiscal year, so it's a two-year study. The purposes are to explore regional transit options regarding coordination of effort between existing transit providers and to improve regional transit service. There's a particular emphasis on cross-county connections, which most of our systems are currently doing. The study would be funded through the NPO. It has, it has been funded in their annual budgeting process and the county contributes to the NPO through dues on a regular basis. So there are county dollars involved, but through our regular membership dues. They're not asking for additional funding support. We understand that the NPO's request for resolution is basically to confirm, particularly with the governments that operate a public transportation system, that they are undertaking this study. So they've reached out to Buncombe, Haywood, Henderson, Madison Counties, as well as the city of Asheville, requesting a resolution. Currently Chairman Newman and Commissioner Edwards are serving on the NPO board, so they have seats there and have been involved in the approval of both the planning work program and this, this study moving forward. Carrie Legal has the resolution in hand, so I don't have a final version that has been reviewed by legal staff, but we want to have that for you for the January 21st meeting for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you have now. I will certainly be bringing it back to you on the 21st as well.
Just to make sure, very much, I think the, the NPO board has been briefed on this, but it actually hasn't formally voted to move it forward. Was that scheduled at the last meeting, which was canceled?
So my understanding is that that has been approved through the budgeting process and to actually move forward and the contents of what would be considered. The request for qualifications hasn't been executed yet. And so the NPO staff wanted to get this in front of all of the governing bodies that operate a transit system first before they went to that next step, just so that there was awareness among all the governments about this study moving forward.
Right. And so when will that resolution come to the NPO board?
At the 21st, please.
All right. And this is just a feasibility study? There's not any kind of predetermined, I mean, sense of how this, you know, what recommendations, if any, might, might come out of it? It's just sort of a, kind of a high-level look at sort of different structures and-
Different structures, funding options, what different transit, regional transit systems can do. So yeah, it will be just an overview and present those kind of options. It would, the, the resolution is worded such that it wouldn't, you know, suggest that the findings of the study or any results of the study would be in any way adopted by the, the governing body or through that-
So if we support the resolution, we're not committing a particular outcome. If we want to make changes, we would have to evaluate that. What's-
Correct. And the intention would be that the findings of the study would then be brought forward again so that you would have that information. I think the concern was is that they wanted to make sure all that the governing entities knew about the study before it went out there and was conducted and before they came back with findings from the study. So I think that's the reason for their effort.
How much funding is the study?
The study is funded through the NPO's budget and that does include county funds that are allocated through our membership and dues on a regular basis.
How much do we do?
So the study, according to their Unified Planning Work Program, is estimated to be $100,000. That uses $20,000 of local funds and that's pooled from all of the participating members of the government that provide dues and membership fees. It's coming out of their regular budget. The portion that would come out of a Buncombe County dollar, I don't specifically know, but we can find that information out from, from the NPO. They could let us know that.
But there's other counties on the NPO?
Yes. Henderson County.
Yeah, so it's District 13 and 14 or 12 and 13 or so. So it's not just Buncombe County that's big?
Correct. So they pool all of those local funds and that's why they don't designate, you know, the $20,000 that's intended to be the match in their budgeting process. It doesn't break it down by how much is coming from each jurisdiction because it's a one pool.
How much does Asheville put in, do you know?
I don't know the specifics. The funding for the NPO actually comes through the governing body's budget at this point. And I know what Buncombe County was contributing a few years ago when it was coming through the planning department's budget. But it's comparable from what I recall to Buncombe County. They're the two largest contributors, or Buncombe County and the city of Asheville, to the, to the NPO.
All right, Matt, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, the last item is, starts off on this and Mr. Lovins, I do have a four o'clock call I have to answer. If I walk out, it's not because of anything that you said.
Thank you for that clarification. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Here today to talk to you about the Sobriety Treatment and Recovery Program. This is a program that was actually initiated and created in the state of Kentucky in 2007. Began to see great results in working with parents with substance use disorder whose children were in the child welfare system. In 2017, we began, July of 2017, we decided to try that model in Buncombe County. We'd had a tremendous increase in our foster care population, had spiraled up to about 392 children that year. And so we implemented that in 2017. In 2018, we coupled that with a real focus on trauma-informed practice. And in two years, we've seen our foster care rates drop below to our lowest level in four years, down to 331 children. As a result of that, and we also were seeing at that time that 60 to 70% of all our children who entered foster care had parents with some type of substance use disorder. So in the fall, actually November of 2018, we were approached, Rebecca Smith is here today, if she has questions and I can answer. Were approached by the state of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to ask if we would be willing to expand our START program if they sought federal funding to cover the complete cost. Of course, we said, sure, we'd be willing to listen and we've talked with them and walked with them through that grant process. And then in December of this year, they came to us with an award letter through the Victims of Crime Act and then that federal dollars is flowing into the Governor's Crime Commission. And they've asked us if we would double our program with the purpose of continuing to evaluate the effectiveness of it with the hopes that they'll be able to take this model statewide. Obviously Buncombe is not the only county where many, many children are coming into foster care due to parental substance use. So what they're offering, the grant cycle actually began in April of 20, the federal grant began in April. You didn't get our award letter until December. So if you see the total award for two years is $1.385 million, we are actually seeking clarification as to whether we have two years from January to spend this money or only until the federal grant cycle would run out March 31st of 2021. We have not gotten an answer yet, but we wanted to bring this to you for your consideration. So you see it will double our capacity to serve families, will continue to build our trauma response and culture. We believe it will continue to reduce the number of children in foster care. And the amazing thing about our statistics actually have been better than the state of Kentucky so far. So of all the cases we have closed through the START initiative, 83% of the children involved in those cases have been either maintained successfully in their home or been able to return home and those parents are in active recovery. So the data is pretty amazing. This is how the grant would break down if we take it. So this model actually is a peer support model. So a START team consists of a supervisor, three professional social workers hired by the department, and then three peer support specialists hired through a contract. And then we also contract for therapeutic clinical assessments and, and therapy. So you can see how this 1.3 would break down. Four of those staff would be county FTEs, benefits, salary benefits, and then the contract service would be the coordinator, the mentors, and 10% of the clinical supervisor. The rest are pretty much operating costs for the total of 1.385 million. So with your permission, we'd like to bring this forward on the 21st for a form of vote. We have to respond yes or no whether we want to receive the grant by the end of January. Any questions? Thank you.
So thank you. Now I guess we're in open discussion. That's it. Okay, we'll be back here at 5 o'clock this afternoon for our regular meeting. Jeremiah.